One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Garza, could you please call the roll?
Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Bushnell. Ms. Kiefer.
Here.
Ms. Seberg.
Here.
Ms. Sabeski.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Alonso.
Here.
Ms. Maddick.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. McGorick, are there additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, there's a student transfer request and personnel addendum that's been added to the consent agenda.
Thank you. And superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Ms. Radford? Well, these are new TVs, aren't they? Look at that.
We've been here a half hour.
Thank you Chairman Di Maria, Dr. McGorick. Good evening, other members of the school board, and good evening to all of you who have come to join us on tonight. We are very excited to present some spectacular students to you tonight. As you know, the MCPS Fine Arts Department is one of the best in the nation, and I'd probably venture to say the world. We have had the privilege of presenting many talented students during our superintendent spotlight, and tonight is no different. We have a couple of Metz Middle School students who have received national recognition, and I'm going to ask them to come and join us down front before I tell you exactly what they did. So Sage McAndrew and Faith Tutco, if you could come down front, please. So Sage and Faith made it into the American Choral Directors Association 2017 National Children's Honor Choir. They auditioned along with other, over 4,000 students from around the country, and were two of the 600 that were selected in their age group. As you can see, this is a very competitive and prestigious program that these students worked very hard to get into. Both students have been invited to spend a week in Minneapolis, Minnesota, in March, where they will rehearse and perform with some of the leading choral conductors in the country. Johanna Lacombe, who serves as the chorus teacher at Metz, I believe is here tonight. We'd like her to come and join her students. So we want to congratulate them on a job well done. Thank you so much for representing Metz Middle School and Manassas City Public Schools so well. Congratulations. Ready?
I don't know. Yeah. You're looking too quick.
Oh, okay. She's ready. Oh, okay. Parents, everybody good? Okay. All right, congratulations ladies, thank you. That's right. Well, we do have more great news from the MCPS Fine Arts Program. This time, we look to Osborne High School. I'm looking at Osborne High School. We are so pleased to know that several of our Osborne students performed exceptionally well at the recent District 9 chorus auditions. We had 13 11th and 12th grade students that made the soprano, alto, bass, and tenor chorus, and two young ladies that made the 9th and 10th grade women's chorus, which features first and second sopranos and first and second altos. Several of the students are with us tonight, along with Angela Easley, who serves as the director of choirs at Osborne. Ms. Easley, can you join us down front? And as I call the students' names, if you will join us. Ryan Pumachan, tenor I. Elena Martin, alternate II for soprano I. Lindsay Donovan, soprano I. Shawn Williman, tenor II. Anna Silver, soprano II. Nia Williams, alto I. Leo Solis, alternate V for tenor I. Tito Ventura, bass I. Enrico Gagarin, bass I. Abigail Silver, soprano I. Kyle Barrows, tenor II. Cheyenne Tyler, alternate I for soprano II. Carson Newby, alternate V for soprano II. Megan Reed, soprano II, women's choir. And we had one more, Charlotte Thomas, for alto II, who was not able to be here tonight, so we want to acknowledge her in her absence. These very talented students will prepare music and attend the District 9 choral event at Patriot High School in February, where they will study with a guest conductor and present a concert for the public on Saturday, February 11th. Congratulations to all of you and your program. Thank you so much. Everybody just kind of come down on this end.
It's all about the bass, no trouble, right guys?
I know you're a large fan of that.
Yes, there we go, that's right. There you go. It's fine. She's going through the perks right here. The paparazzi. Okay. Smile, everybody. I think we're good. Congratulations, I think we're good? Yeah, okay. Thank you all, thank you. That's it, thank you. Congratulations. Smile.
Committee reports. Mr. Williams, anything from academics?
No report this week.
Mr. Albrecht, education support?
No report, sir.
Ms. Sabeski, anything from policy?
No report.
Finance, Mr. Albrecht?
Just a reminder, there is a finance meeting on the 21st of November, next Monday.
Thank you, sir. Board member comments, Ms. Maddick?
What? They can't carry. Who can?
Ours are lit.
They're green.
Testing. Ms. Maddick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to first start off by saying thank you to our vets who have served, and I hope everyone, we have all honored them on Veterans Day, this last Friday. And also, I would like to say, due to a loss in our community who was a veteran, I hope, it's just a sad time for everybody, and I hope that he was just a great member of our community, and it's just lost, it's a loss to our community. And I would just like to everyone to recognize that what he did for the community, what he did for everyone in it, and all the, his kids that are, go to our schools, and it's just very sad. And past that, which is, I would like to bring up, that winter sports awards are now going on, and I hope everyone is going to go out and get involved, and just try new things. At swim practice, we had this boy come who has never swam in his entire life, and he got in the water, and maybe he could make it halfway down, and then he had to stop. But it's just so great to see people try new things, and every, people were passing him left and right, but he hasn't gave up, and it's just so great to see people out there trying new things and not giving up. And I hope that we can apply things like this to every aspect of our life, not just sports, but to anything new that we try, and that we really just keep going, no matter if we're new at it, or if it's hard. So I like, I want to start, everyone to try to apply that to their life, and just keep going no matter how hard it is. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't swim half the pool either. Ms. Alonso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today at Osborne High School, as part of the CTE program, local businesses came in to help our students with mock interviews for the future, because we all know how important it is to prepare students, not only for college, but also students going into the workforce. And thank you, Ms. Benner, for making it possible, but a lot of students expressed to me their gratitude, and they're like, they're really thankful, because they're like, oh, like, it really like helped me prepare to see what, what to expect in the future. And I just want to say thank you for that, because it's like, yeah, like I said, it showed them the benefits, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Seberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This week, our schools are celebrating National Young Readers Week, and today, I was able to go over and read to some pre-K kids at Jenny Dean, and second graders too. And then over at Weems, I went to Ms. Lenzero's class in 3rd grade, and Mrs. Kennedy's class in 2nd grade. Since it's nearing the bedtime hour for our younger students, I hope they are all snug in their niches, in their nests, and their nooks, going wild, simply wild, about wonderful books. And that's a line from one of the books I read to them. I also headed over to Osborne for the CTE open house, which was great, and I heard really good responses too, and thanks to Ms. Benner, all the staff at Osborne, and all the businesses that participated today, and also to the students for participating. As I was over there, I was greeted in the hallway by the Future Business Leaders of America, that were selling treats to help celebrate their American Enterprise Day, which salutes and publicizes the American free enterprise system, and teaches others about it. So thank you for the cookies and the popcorn. Overall, it was a great day to be a school board member, and I look forward to serving for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Well, get settled in, because hard to not hear, it's him taking his time and my time. And I'm warning you, the comments are kind of long, I'm going to touch on a few things, but I hope you bear with me. First, I hope everyone has a great, happy Thanksgiving break. Congratulations to all of our honorees tonight, and all the sports teams at Osborne, and Metz, who have finished their fall season. Last week, I attended a performance at Gerani's Coffee House by a number of our Osborne guitar music students in the Trium Music Society. They did a phenomenal job, and thanks to Gerani's for hosting, to Ms. Ruback for organizing it, to Ms. Kozic and Mr. Garfield for being there and supporting the kids, it really meant a lot to them. On my way to work last week in DC, I ran into some of our fine arts students from Osborne, Mr. Gas and Mrs. Weaver, they're going to the National Gallery, and they're wondering what I was doing there. I'm like, I'm going to work, you know, I have a job. But the kids were so well behaved, they had a great time. Another example of our kids doing great things and being great in public. Some of the kids even sat in the quiet car in the VRE, and the VRE and the quiet car, you better not say anything, or people will like, get mad. And the kids sat there, they were perfect. So congratulations to Ms. Benner, and the kids, and everyone, because the kids represented our, our school system well. As was mentioned, today is National Young Readers Day, and I had the honor of reading to Mrs. Rombolt's kindergarten class, and Mrs. Faria's 4th grade class at Round. It was an amazing experience, and I saw Dr. McGorick, Mayor Parrish, and Mr. Pate there as well, so thank them for reading. Mrs. Rombolt's class, we'd like you guys to know they're excited about Thanksgiving. And Mrs. Faria's class, want you to know that they love her, and all the teachers at Round. So they're really happy, and it's great to be in that kind of environment. Now, on to the elections. I sincerely congratulate all those who ran locally, nationally, around the country, and those who worked on their campaigns. To everyone who prevailed in any election, my thoughts and prayers are with you. Running for office is not for the faint of heart. So to Peter O'Hanlon, Kimberly Jenkins Bailey, and Peter's here in the audience, Russ Harrison, John Way, Michael Ullin, Rex Parr, and Teresa Coats Ellis, who didn't prevail in the vote count, thank you for putting yourself out there and running, because our democracy wouldn't be the same without you guys putting that effort forth, so thank you, I appreciate it. Congratulations to Pam, Mark, Ian, Patricia, Kristen, Suzanne, Robin, Hal, and Scott on their victories. Pam, I'm going to miss you, but I'm sure you'll be around, and Tim's going to miss you too, I bet.
Oh, yeah.
Kristen, Scott, and Suzanne, I look forward to working with you. And Robin, I think Robin's out there, yeah, welcome to the team, I look forward to having you up here with us. I am heartened that so many folks started election locally, but I'm disappointed with the lack of civility and decency which seeped into our local campaign. As Tim loves to say, "This is Manassas." I appreciate it from Councilman Andy Howard's take on this issue. Our love and respect for our community makes Manassas a special place, and I believe that feeling was somewhat tarnished by this and another recent election. I hope that in the future, we can focus on and enthusiastically discuss the issues with consideration, respect, and civility. Our community deserves that. Under other circumstances, I would spend more time on this, but I'm compelled to switch the focus, based on things that are going on in my life, to the national election. Before I delve into this, I want everyone to clearly hear that what I'm about to say is not meant to cast aspersions or judge anybody because they voted for a certain candidate. I just want people to vote, to be quite honest with you. People cast their vote for various reasons and issues which have been discussed and will continue to be discussed. I have very strong feelings about the presidential election, but that is not my focus today. My focus is the highly divided state of our nation, and the repercussions of this election, which was unlike any other in my lifetime, at least that I can remember. No matter whom you voted for prior to Election Day, there was undeniably, and I'm looking at the whole panoply of comments and things that happened, misogynistic, racist, anti-Semitic, non-inclusive, deplorable, and offensive behavior that we should not tolerate in a civilized society, especially in an election. I am blessed to have many friends and acquaintances of different races, ethnicities, and walks of life, but some, and friends I have who have voted for both candidates, and actually third party candidates as well, they don't seem to understand the depth of anger and fear of many about the results. I've told people in my job, and other places, that people are understandably angry and scared. And this is not a simply, quote, "My candidate lost, and I'm angry" anger, it's a visceral anger and fear predicated on individuals have seen and heard. Since Election Day, there's been a wave of post-election hate crimes, including at least a few where Trump supporters were beaten up in Chicago and Philadelphia, I did a search online today before I came here, and the CEO in San Diego was fired today for making death threats against Donald Trump. That's horrible and unjustifiable, it's wrong. The vast majority of these post-election crimes, however, are associated with people who claim to support the president-elect, and there are too many to mention. As of today, the Southern Poverty Law Center has counted more than 300 cases of hateful harassment or intimidation in the United States since Election Day, and no such as the cases that are reported, over 300. There have been swastikas painted on schools in New York and Maryland, and incidents involving citizens who identify as LGBTQ. At Wellesley College in Massachusetts, two students from nearby Babson College drove a large truck through campus with the Trump flag flying off its back, screaming "Trump's name and make America great again." They drove to the house of students of African descent, rode around campus yelling at students, and spit towards a student when they were asked to leave. There have been many stories about Muslim women who've had their hijabs taken off, and even though there have been a couple false stories, the vast majority of these claims apparently have been validated. On a Saturday night in Brooklyn, a man punched a woman in the face at a popular French restaurant after she expressed disappointment about the election of President-elect Trump. And this is not limited to physical behavior, and this is disgusting, but I'm going to read it anyway. A few days ago, the director of Clay County Development Corporation in West Virginia posted on Facebook, "It would be so refreshing to have a classy, beautiful, dignified First Lady back in the White House. I'm tired of seeing an ape, A-P-E, in heels." And her friend, the mayor of the city, responded, "You made my day." These are not folks on the fringe of society, these are educated people and elected officials saying this in public. This is despicable, disgusting, and frightening. I bet some people wonder, what does that do with Manassas? Why am I bringing this up? Well, generally, since it affects our country, it affects us. But specifically, we have many people and students in our community, or our school system, that are hurting and scared. If you don't believe me, talk to some of our OHS staff and students, they'll tell you. I'm not making this stuff up. Talk to folks in our community, it touches us. And I will give you a few quick personal examples to bring it more closely to home. My son, who graduated from Osborne, is in medical school at Wake Forest University in North Carolina, with another Osborne graduate. We have two graduates in medical school at Wake Forest, 2nd year class of a Class of 100, which is phenomenal. Anyhow, her name is Bidehi. There was an incident at their school. How do you think that makes them feel, to be scared at their own college in North Carolina? My wife and I have a friend who lives in this area, I'm going to be vague with this incident, because it's very personal. The incident did not happen in Manassas City, but our friend's child is African-American, and before the election season was really intense, a white classmate walked up to this child with something looking like a rope, and said, and I'm paraphrasing here, "This rope is for you, so we can hang you," and the N-word. These are children, and the child was serious. On Friday, I found out that a close family friend from this area as well, who attends the University of Pennsylvania, and Ivy League school in Philadelphia, is dealing with this. A number of black freshmen at UPenn were added to a social media account that included racial slurs and a daily lynching calendar. Our friend has contacted my wife and me since the incident, we emailed over Facebook, and she's scared, confused, and angry, and I don't know if she wanted me to mention this, but she said it, she said, "I hate white people, because of what's going on." And she's a lovely child, who goes to church and believes in God, but she's scared. I am sad, I am angry, and I'm disappointed, and I fear things will get worse before they get better, but I am hopeful. My faith, my family, and my community demand this. I'm hopeful because of the courage of Michael Schwerner, a white Jewish graduate from one of my alma maters, Cornell University, who was killed in 1964 in Mississippi defending the rights of African-Americans to vote. I'm hopeful because of our veterans, Dr. Martin Luther King. I am hopeful because of Baylor University students, Baylor University, a school in Texas. Last Wednesday morning, after the election, a black Baylor student was walking to her 10:00 AM neuroscience class, when another student bumped into her, and the student sort of shoved her off the sidewalk and said, "No, N-word, allowed on the sidewalk." She posted some faces on social media, and it blew up. Two days later, she walked out of her door to go to class, and there were 300 people gathered to walk her to class. Schoolmates, teachers, and school administrators. They had organized via the Twitter hashtag, "I walk with Natasha," which spread through Baylor. The crowd was there to keep her safe. Overwhelmed, she hugged a nearby friend and cried. And everything I'm referencing, except my personal experiences, you can find this online, so I'm not just making this stuff up. I am hopeful because Americans' diversity makes us great. Diversity which is woven into a beautiful tapestry of citizens striving for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Our religious and ethnic diversity provides us with a unique wealth and breadth of opinions, strength, and contributions, which is the envy of the world. I've traveled a lot, people love what we have here, and they don't understand why we are the way we are at the moment. I'm talking about coming together, not election result, but how we are coming together. If we let our diversity help us, we can be the best. If America's to continue to be great, we must respect each other, and honestly and substantively and directly, address our serious issues of class, race, economics, and how we treat women. We can't look at people and abridge their rights based on their orientation, their ethnicity, or their religion. And we must stop exercising what I like to call situational ethics, where we call out horrible behavior in others, and ignore the same behavior or worse in those we support, and that goes for everybody. I am far from perfect, and rely on my faith in God to keep me grounded, to try to adhere to these ideals, and I pray that everyone finds something they can hold on to, to help them be the best person they can be. We're either going to soar together and be great, or descend into chaos. I will conclude with this, and I'm sorry my daughter and all those kids who I've known since they were like, 6 years old, have gone, the choir kids, because they love to sing, and they love music, and they love Hamilton. Thanks to my daughter, I love listening to the soundtrack from the brilliant Broadway play, Hamilton. One of my favorite songs is called "My Shot," and that song, the Hamilton character talks about his desire to keep our young country together. And I didn't have to break this down until I knew the lyrics. The main lyrics I want to mention are, the character says, "I am not throwing away my shot, I am not throwing away my shot, I'm just like my country, I'm young, scrappy, and hungry, and I'm not throwing away my shot." America is no longer a young, scrappy, and hungry enterprise, but it is worth fighting for. And I'll conclude with this statement, first in Spanish, then in English. "La historia tiene sus ojos en nosotros. Somos más fuertes donde estamos rotos. Es hora de tomar su foto." Which translated means, "History now has its eyes on us. We are as strong as when we are broken, and it's time for us to take our shot."
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'm glad I'm not next. Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I just want to say, Mr. Williams, thank you for that. You always inspire us with your words, and more so with your actions, and who you are as a person, so thank you for that. On the theme of hope, I look at the talented students in front of us tonight, or anywhere that we go, and they give us hope. That's why we sit up here. And the dedicated teachers, and principals, and staff, and everybody, that, there's hope. We've got hope here in Manassas. Just a couple of quick updates. Mr. Albrecht and I attended the Governor's School Joint Board Meeting, I think it was this week, I can't remember. You know, where we talked a little bit more about what the application processes for our students to the Governor's School will look like, as well as working through the budget for what that will entail, which we'll bring back once it's approved, and incorporate it into our budget process. I also attended the Gifted Talented Advisory Committee Meeting, which, the group, it's a parent-run group who's phenomenal, they work with the staff of the Gifted Talented Program, and they're in the beginning of the stages of really looking at the program, and kind of evaluating effectiveness in different ways. So it was interesting to sort of hear perspectives, and I know that they're looking for thoughts and feedback. I think by February 6th meeting, 6:00 PM, Osborne High School, for parents who are interested in learning more, or hearing more, there's plenty of ways to get informed, but the Gifted Talented staff and coordinators were just there alongside the parents, talking to them, and really, both listening and contributing, so it was really a nice conversation. A bunch of us are road tripping this week, together, both for bonding, but also for professional development at the Virginia School Board Association Conference, so we look forward to that as well. And because Mr. Williams did such a justice to sort of the whole election, and where we are in the country today, I won't focus too much on it, and plus, it's so much over Facebook, I feel a little overwhelmed by it all myself. So what I am going to focus on is sort of where Ms. Maddick started the conversation tonight, and it's about our vets. And I just want to give all respect and honor to our veterans, who we should respect every day, because they are the ones who gave us that right to vote. They are the ones who fight for that. They fight for our ability to be able to serve in different ways in our community. And I just want to say, I am honored and humbled to be serving on the school board and serving this community. I congratulate everybody, and I tell you, Mr. O'Hanlon, you all gave us a run for our money. It was, it was a race where it was just so nice to get to know everybody on the positive side, and I feel like I personally made a lot of friends, and I got to know others really well, and I too congratulate you, I know Mr. Wolf was here as well. Mrs. Williams, it'll, it'll be a good time. So, thank you, I'm very humbled and honored to be here and to serve our kids.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Sabeski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to thank all of our veterans. Freedom is not free, and it's because of the sacrifices they and their families have made, that we all get the privileges that we have in this country, that sometimes we maybe don't think much about. So, in this season, thank you to all of our veterans. I'd like to congratulate all the students that were here earlier. It's amazing to me when I see the great accomplishment of so many of our students, it's not one or two, but, but so many, doing such amazing things, and we should all be so very proud of the students that we have in our community. I'd like to congratulate all of the people that were involved in this election, especially locally, who worked hard, and even those who may not have been given a seat. To just put your name out there is very honorable, and I have great respect for all of you, and I hope that we continue to see and work with everybody that was involved in the local campaign. Even though there were some things during the campaign that were said and done to me personally, of which most were not true, I don't think any of it was true, I want to say that civility matters, and we are all going to go forward together, because that's what It's not one or two, but so many doing such amazing things, and we should all be so very proud of the students that we have in our community. I'd like to congratulate all of the people that were involved in this election, especially locally, who worked hard, and even those who may not have been given a seat. To just put your name out there is very honorable, and I have great respect for all of you, and I hope that we continue to see and work with everybody that was involved in the local campaign. Even though there were some things during the campaign that were said and done to me personally, of which most were not true, I don't think any of it was true, I want to say that civility matters, and we are all going to go forward together because that's what Manassas does. So speaking of that, today I had the privilege of starting at Williams Elementary and reading to a kindergarten class and a second grade class for National Young Readers Day. These are some of the best times I have as a school board member because it takes us back to the fundamental reason of what we all do up here every single time we get together. Literacy is so important to student success, and I am so happy to participate and be involved in these Young Reader Days, and I look forward to continued participation. So following that, I went over to Osborne High School, and others have already talked a little bit about this. I had the pleasure of touring our Career Technical Education Program at Osborne High School today. It is truly amazing what is being offered to our students. The business people that I happened to tour with today were in awe of what the students are being offered in the programs at Osborne. We saw everything from networking to cosmetology. Students being taught to build houses and how to utilize 3D printers. Speaking of that, Mr. Schmitzky, who's the tech ed instructor, sent all of you these nuts and bolts that they make with the extra materials, because he said that he uses these whenever you get bored, this way, or to keep you awake during meetings. So I told him that I'd pass these out tonight and make sure all of you stayed awake during our meeting.
Let's check the tolerance, let's see if they're interchangeable.
They are, it's pretty amazing. Thank you to Susan McManair, the supervisor for K-12 CTE, and Paul Stein, the administrator of the CTE at Osborne High School, for putting on this great CTE event today, where students were able to do mock interviews, and many of us were able to tour the programs. It truly showed a great day for our students, our businesses, and therefore, our entire I look forward to professional development at Virginia School Board Association this week. I will have the privilege, and for the last time, the honor of working with our student representatives at this conference. Our students do attend a day also of training and professional development with all of the, a lot of the other student representatives across the state. So I'm happy to have them come with us and be able to participate in this opportunity, develop their own leadership skills that they'll carry beyond their time of service here with us. Thanksgiving is coming. I hope everyone has a great holiday, a safe holiday, as many of you may travel. Be careful to take the time to enjoy the things that are simple, our friends and our family, those things that are not replaceable, that we often may take for granted. In May 2010, I was fortunate to be elected by the voters of Manassas to the Manassas City School Board. It was with great pride that I have served the entire city on this board since July of 2010. I had the pleasure to serve with not only these wonderful people that I am up here with tonight, but also with Art Bushnell, Kermit Dance, and Jack McGee. I learned many things from all of these people, and we have seen many great accomplishments for all of our schools in the time that I've been able to serve. I like to believe that I helped make some of these accomplishments possible, but really, it has been done by our students and our very dedicated staff, that we are fortunate to have here in the great city of Manassas. The truth is, I serve by listening and asking questions, asked Dr. McGorick. I have always served with integrity and much transparency. I've always kept all students and staff in my thoughts before casting any vote on the studies. My decisions are based on research, data, ethics, and in the best interest of the majority being affected, not my personal beliefs. In April, I decided that I would run for the Manassas City Council. I did this after great consideration and deliberation with my family and friends. Trust me, this was not an easy decision for me to make, as I feel one of the most important elected offices that anyone can hold is as an elected school board member, because after all, the students are our future. I have volunteered in this community in various capacities for more than 20 consecutive years. I have done this because of my love for our community and everyone who lives and works here. I was given a great deal of encouragement to run for city council from many, many community members, so I agreed to make a run for a seat for the council. Last Tuesday, I was humbled and appreciative that the voters in the city of Manassas elected me to serve on the Manassas City Council. I promise that I will be working very hard and take my responsibilities very serious. However, with this honor comes the need for me to resign my seat on the Manassas City School Board effective December 31st, 2016. I believe you only get out of things which you're willing to put into them. I hope everyone has seen that I have been completely vested in this responsibility and given it my all. In return, I've been given the opportunity to see our school system prosper and to develop into a system that is able to provide great education with fabulous opportunities to all of our students and staff. This work will continue and grow with the dedicated people that continue to serve on this board and those who have been recently elected, as well as our truly, truly amazing staff that we have at all levels here in Manassas City Public Schools. Please know how much I appreciate everything that you all give daily selfishly from your hearts in order to achieve the success we have been honored with, but most importantly, the differences you make daily in the life of a child. Thank you for helping me grow in my knowledge of education, and I now look forward to working with everyone in a very collaborative manner with all of you as I go forward as a member of the Manassas City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht.
Mr. Chair, thank you, and a sincere thank you, Sanford, for your comments. I'd wanted to talk about the election, and I don't think on my best day or my best dreams I could have ever spoken more eloquently than you did. And I do think all of us should be concerned about the rhetoric and the divisiveness that occurred nationally, regionally, and unfortunately even locally. As a nation, as a Commonwealth, as a community, as a city, we all need to come together. I have privately shared with those who ran for the school board, and I will publicly say thank you. The school board race did not allow itself to become mired in that. Six candidates ran, all well-qualified, all doing it for the right reason, all positively focused, talking about results and outcomes in children. That's what it really ought to be about, that's what Manassas is about. For those that had to endure untrue statements, it's unfortunate because politics should not be a winner at win-at-all-cost spectrum, it's about making the community better.
So Pam, thank you for your service, and thank you for your continued service. Congratulations to all those locally, nationally, regionally who won. Congratulations. I am hoping in my heart we're all are going to work together to do what's right, to make our nation come together, and locally, to do what's right for the children of Manassas. That's all I've got to say, sir.
Thank you. I know you all have been waiting for me to speak, you know, but I'm going to make it short. Mr. Williams, I agreed with everything you said. I agree with what everyone said up here, so I'm not going to reiterate it. The only thing I'm going to double up on is congratulations to everyone who won and everyone who didn't win, because everyone's a winner in the city. And I'm very proud of our city, and I am a little disappointed in some of the things that came out, but hopefully we can do better than that next time. That's enough for the election. Pam, you've got another meeting, so no love fest tonight. I mean, we don't want to go crazy, we don't want two nights of that, so. In December, we'll talk about it, but for right now, no. Veterans Day, we thanked all of our veterans many times. I appreciate everybody doing that, but I want to thank our veteran. Mr. Albrecht, thank you very much for your service here and previously. I also want to make sure everybody knows that we are going to the SBA this week, and that our own Mr. Albrecht, and it's just going to be a love fest, in two weeks, in December, we're not going to talk about you at all, but he will become the president-elect of the SBA, and that is just absolutely huge. And thank you for that service as well.
Thanks.
And tomorrow is the deadline for the Leadership Academy that so many people here have gone through, and it's been such a great success. I assume there's some spots left, so get your applications in and learn about what we're doing and become more involved in your community. And I'll stop there. See, I am the quickest one, mainly because you all said everything already.
You want to say something about there'll be an announcement about the appointment?
Well, there will be, tomorrow, there will be an announcement. You could have done that. Make me look silly. About the appointment that we will have to do in January to take the seat of Mrs. Sebeski. A little bit of a love fest. I don't know that we're going to be able to replace her, but somebody's got to take her seat, so. And that announcement will be coming from central office, probably our own Ms. Radford will put that out. Am I done? Thank you, sir. We will move on to citizens' comments, and this will be just general comments to begin with. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about the services, right? Okay. Services, policies, and affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. I have no one signed up. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Okay. We will now move to public input for the Capital Improvement Plan, and is there anyone that would wish to speak on the CIP? And we will say the public hearing is then, the public input is now closed as well. The consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the city of Manassas to adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six-zero. And we'll move on to the discussion agenda. Proposed Mets Middle School cell tower. Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, school board members, Dr. McGorick. Tonight, I have with me Jennifer Bond, who's Director of Business Development, and David Goldsmith, who's the project manager with Milestone Communications, and they will give a presentation. This presentation was given to the Finance Committee, I can't remember when, several weeks ago, and we're presenting it to you tonight to put a cell tower at Mets Middle School. So I'll let them go through their presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. See if I can reduce that down, but how do we, sorry. Oh, wrong way. There we go. That should work, right? Hello. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Bond. I'm the Director of Business Development for Milestone Communications, and I see many familiar faces. I think probably most of you have heard me present once or twice before, so thank you for having us back this evening. Hard to follow all of those beautiful comments, so anyway, I guess we'll move along here. For those of you that have not heard about us, just a little bit about our company in general and our model, and then I will pass things off to the project manager for this proposed project, to share a little bit about the specific project at Mets. So, our company, simply put, we've been around for 15 years, and we partner with local schools, governments, and parks to market land that you own to the wireless carriers in the market as potential places to fill network coverage gaps and build wireless cell towers. We have been doing this, as I said, for 15 years. We have currently about 2,300 different places across six different states. We started in Virginia, this was definitely our backyard, we're based out of Reston, Virginia. We work in Virginia, Maryland, Delaware, the Carolinas, and now a little bit in Florida. So back 15 years ago, Fairfax County Public Schools was our first partner. We've gone on to build about 30-plus towers for them, and we generate revenue for them through a partnership agreement. They get about 1.6 million a year, so something that we've done for a long time. We're very adept at working with school districts and school systems. So we have built about 150 towers, and I think we're up to now, since this presentation was put together, about 52 partners that we work with. So simply put, what we do is, the school district puts in the land for a location to build the tower, and we put in all the money to construct the tower, community outreach, the zoning, the permitting, ensuring, inspecting, maintaining, anything related to that structure, we pay for and do. And then there's, we share the revenue. Just a little bit, I won't talk much about this, we all know this, the trends in wireless and kind of why this project has come about. So as you know, right now, there's probably, I don't know what happened to Verizon Wireless, is that not, oh, Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Sprint. Shentel is actually a new carrier on the market, but these are the main wireless carriers that we work with as our customers. This specific project was brought to us by T-Mobile. This chart just shows kind of what we, again, what we all know, that wireless data is something that people, consumers desperately want, and there's more and more of it. So if you look back in 2014, this chart shows per month, the number of exabytes consumed by consumers, and if you go all the way up to 2019 and how that's projected out, what this is showing is just growing consumer demand. And the reason school properties are so great is that the carriers want to typically be where people live, where people work, and where people play, within communities. That's where the coverage is needed, and so that's why school properties typically are found in those areas. And, let's see here, I guess that's basically on the trend. So on to the model. Again, I think most of you have heard this before, but we share 40% of all the revenue that we get from the wireless carriers. Forty percent of that flows back directly to the school district for every tower that we build. This is just an example here, to give you an idea of how much money can flow through to the school district. Every tower that we build, we won't build it unless we have at least one carrier interested, in this case, T-Mobile. So we will build a tower with one carrier, but we will build it with a structural capacity to hold up to five carriers. On average, in our portfolio, we have about an average of three carriers per pole. So just to give you an example, on average, the carriers give us $30,000 a year. Forty percent of that is about $12,000. That would flow back to the school district per carrier per year. That does escalate at 3% per year. And then that is our recurring revenue stream. In addition to that, the school district would receive a one-time fee of $25,000 at the time we construct the pole, and then any additional carrier locations on the pole, the school district would receive an additional $5,000. And then finally, about 20% of the structural capacity of every tower that we build is reserved for the school district for its own individual needs. Either now or in the future, sometimes school districts will hold them for public safety equipment for the local city government or county government. We just are getting ready to construct our first tower in Albemarle County Public Schools. They actually are putting equipment, we designed the tower specifically for their equipment needs in addition to the carriers. They are putting equipment on their tower with a really neat program, actually, to provide broadband to underserved children. So, don't quote me on this number, but I believe, I was actually very surprised, the number of children that will receive broadband as a result of the equipment on that tower is around 3,000 to 4,000 kids. So it's a pretty phenomenal impact there at that school. So that's, you know, an option with that free space. So I just want to talk a little bit about our community outreach process. This is something that we hold very near and dear to our hearts. This is something that we hold very near and dear to our hearts, something that we've learned a lot of lessons over the last 15 years, and something that I think does set us a bit apart from other tower developers. We have a very transparent community outreach and a very thorough community outreach process. So the first thing that we do with any of our towers, once we get the green light to move forward from the School Board and the staff, and we find an appropriate location, we would then reach out to, with the help of the School Board or the School Leadership, we would reach out to the school principal and share with them about the project and the proposed project, answer any questions that they might have. We would typically meet with the PTO leadership, the PTA leadership at that school, as well as potentially the individual school member that serves that school. And then what we would do is create a list of folks that we're gonna reach out to specifically. So we design a website for every tower that we build, and that website has its own IP address and is specifically for that tower site. And I'll share with you a little bit about that. But we would send out cards or letters to stakeholders that would tell them about the website so they could go visit and learn information. We are required by local zoning code to notify a certain number of residents and nearby communities, community members. We often go far in excess of that. So this is just an example, I believe this was Herndon Middle School, oh no, Ramon Middle School. So just each little green dot there kind of shows where we, the folks that we notified. And we would work closely with staff to make sure that we are notifying not only the residents, but we strongly recommend that everyone in the school community is also notified, and we would work with the school on how best we can help to get that information out. So folks are notified at the same time, and then in the meantime, prior to the cards or the letters going out, we construct this website. And the idea is that folks can go on the website and learn tons of information about the proposed tower, get their questions answered, and also have a location where they can reach out to someone at Milestone to answer additional questions. This website will share information about who the carriers are, why there's a gap, why there's a need. It will talk about what it's going to look like. It will mention the community meeting, the location of the community meeting, and the public hearing, and kind of all the local zoning process and the approval process and how that will work. Has tons of information about wireless safety, wireless communications. And here's a typical card that we would send out to direct them to the website. It will show how your coverage will increase, let's say you're a T-Mobile customer at this specific site, we would have coverage maps to show how the coverage would increase as a result of that tower being placed. We do photo simulations, so we drive around the school property and around the nearby neighborhood, and we take about a dozen different pictures, different vantage points throughout the neighborhood, and then we, well, before that, we fly a balloon to the height of the proposed tower. We drive around and take these pictures, and then we superimpose the type of pole that we are going to build on these pictures so that folks can see, you know, this was Fairfax City High School where we built this pole, and the map there in the corner will show the picture was taken from this intersection, so people can see, okay, that's what the tower's gonna look like from that area. We put several of those up. And then finally, we do website analytics. This is very helpful when we go before a planning commission or a local zoning board. It shows the number of people that visited the website, the number of individual IP addresses. There's usually two spikes, one when the cards go out, people go, and then right before the community meeting or before the hearing, folks will go again. And in this situation, for example, there were 470 sessions, 320 unique IP addresses that went to this specific site. So in the event, when we get to that community meeting or to that public hearing, if there's one or two people there in opposition, hopefully we can talk to them and alleviate their concerns, but we can also share that there are 300-plus people that are not here tonight and have looked at the information. We host a community meeting, which is not just something that we do to check the box. It's, in fact, we very much encourage folks that don't get their questions answered through the website or through contacting us directly to come to the community meeting, because that's where we want to hear from those folks. And while we can't make everyone happy, we do a lot of things to try to alleviate concerns of the community, sharing with them about wireless safety. We've moved the tower. Sometimes we can change the height of the tower, but that's difficult, depending upon the coverage needs for the carrier. We can change the type of tower, we can plant landscaping, you know, there's all sorts of different kinds of things that we can do, and we will listen to the community on if there's something that we can do in each individual case. And so that's kind of the general specifics about Milestone, our model, how we work with school districts. As you know, Mets Middle School has been brought to our attention from T-Mobile as a place that would help meet their coverage objectives. And so David Goldsmith, who's the Project Manager on that side, is just gonna talk a little bit about the project, and then we'll take questions at the end.
Thank you, Jen. I just wanted to talk a little bit, like she said, about actual Mets Middle School. This is aerial photograph of the proposed location onsite, and I wanted to kind of talk you through the process of how we got to this location. We met Andy Hawkins onsite, me, Andy, and a few other Milestone representatives, and walked around the front, because that was our initial thought, was we wanted to put it in the front of the, or the north of the property. And due to the obstruction of the view, it just wasn't looking good. There were setback issues, and there just wasn't enough room up there. So Andy took us back to the ballfields where there are already existing light structures, vertical infrastructure already in place. And we walked around the site and actually came up about a location where the, like, the third baseline is, on that light pole. Proposed that location and was kind of deterred away from that location because of the already program there. They use that gate to bring equipment on the field, to mow the field. People use that location to view the baseball games when they are there, there's a lot of traffic around there. So we were kind of moved to the outfield behind the fence where there's not as much traffic. There's already a light pole there, there's the score, school scoreboard there. There's an access road that leads from the street to the soccer field, and we could branch off of that to get to the site to disturb the least amount of grounds at the school. The existing lights, we went out there and saw that they were 80 feet, and we are proposing 100 feet out there, so it's not that much taller. There's mature trees that buffer from the neighboring properties. It's out of the site, or out of the way of the real programmed use of the schools, so we're kind of working with the school to try and find the best location for the pole. Now, this is, we had an engineer go out there and take measurements, and this is kind of the overall concept plan. I know it's a little hard to see, but we can, if we move along, we can see, it's zoomed in better. That is the existing road, access road to the soccer field on the right, and then the hatched area is the proposed access road. So like I said, we try and mitigate the amount of disturbed land and fit it into the best context that we can at the school. We are gonna go along the back fence of the outfield and work with Facilities Director to make sure that everything is up to snuff with changing lights and making sure that we follow protocol and everything. Here's another example of the compound, just zoomed in a little bit more, showing you the proposed for five, and then T-Mobile would actually be the one in the middle. And then the pole would be, we would take out the light pole that's there now, put in a more structurally sound one, put the lights back where they are, and then put the antennas above that. As you can see on this elevation, that shows the view of it, where the lights are gonna be restored, and then where the antennas will be, at the top at 100 Rad Center. Rad is Radiation Center. And then, these are some, this is some, this is an example at Lake Braddock Secondary School, it's a middle and high school. If you look, it's, I think it's taller, I don't know the exact height of that one, I should, but, forgot that. And then, here's another one at Centerville High School, where they actually have two light poles that were put up, and just wanted to kind of show you how that looks, kind of blends into the surrounding vertical infrastructure that's already there. This is a monopole, so it doesn't have any lights on it, at West Gate Elementary School, but kind of wanted to show you how we try and work with the site to make it the least visual impact as possible. And then this is at Fairfax High School, and kind of the same way, we did the blue fence to imitate their school colors around the compound so that it kind of blends in and looks like it's supposed to be there. Now, if you have any questions for us, we're glad to answer anything.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, this is something we as a board, we talked about several years ago, obviously there has to be demand. I think, as Bond talked about, I mean, across the Commonwealth, there's what's known as the digital divide. There is absolutely a demand for broadband services in our community. It's a fact of life, so yes, we are doing this because there's compensation, renumeration coming to the school system, but it's also to meet a need we have. I mean, it will increase the availability of broadband services specifically at the school and the surrounding community. You know, there are parts of Virginia that the only internet they have, the high-speed internet they have is what comes over broadband, over the telephone, over the cell services, so. You know, I think it's representative of where we're going in the future, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I've got a couple, or just one question, I guess. And there's only one written down here, so I've only got one. And Russ might help me with this. The, you're gonna take the lights down, put a new pole up, put the lights back up. Headlights on a car have a distinct direction. How is that handled? I mean, do we just put the lights up and they're close enough, or, I don't know how precise the lighting has to be as far as the direction of the lights, once they're taken, taken down? What has to be done to make sure that they're right to go back up? Because that's gonna be in the outfield, I don't want it in the batter's eyes, or whatever might, might, might happen. Sir?
We'll work with Milestone to make sure that the lights are refocused to where it gets the broad spectrum of the field.
Right, and it's just looking at it at night, right? I mean, there's no guidance, there's no equipment you use to make it precise, it's just, so it's lit correctly, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Nothing technical.
Just covering to make sure it gets the best spectrum of the field. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, guys, thank you very much, we appreciate it. We will bring this back up in December and vote on it then.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate you being here. Capital Improvement Plan and draft five-year forecast, Mr. Hawkins.
Can you pull up the Capital Improvement Plan, please? So before you, we've, I've said several times about this in front of you here tonight, we have the, we had the Capital Improvement Plan. Now we have it, let me drive, I got it. So, in front of you tonight is the five-year Capital Improvement Plan. This plan was, a vast majority of this plan was devised last year when we went not only for five years, but we went through 2030 with, working with our Facilities Department in conjunction with CityGate GIS, who helped us with not only this project, but with redistricting and projecting our enrollment going, going forward. So if you look at the top line, where we talk about city transfer and the pay-as-you-go, the School Board last year decided on a fixed amount that we have dedicated ourselves to putting back into our facilities every year. This number was not derived by accident, it's based on an industry standard of how much money that it would be the appropriate amount to spend on our facilities annually. So we have committed ourselves to keeping our facilities, bringing our facilities up to date and keeping them there for the foreseeable future. So if you look down further on, you'll see a line that says Bonds, and we'll, at certain points throughout these years, we will have to borrow money to be able to finance some of the improvements that are, that'll be going on. Right now, you see on the screen where you have FY17, which is our current year budget. We have some big dates that are coming up. For example, tomorrow at 2:00, we're gonna open the bids for the Gillum Field relocation, and that will help determine whether this amount of money, this $4 million that we have set aside, is the appropriate amount of money for that. And you'll see further down where we have, you know, $200,000 set aside for the demolition of the old Baldwin School. So we'll be coming back to the Finance Committee on November the 21st to discuss with them that this CIP and the, what the bid results were, and what, if any, effect will this have on our, on our current CIP plan. If you look forward to FY18, you'll see that there are no Bond requests out in FY17, and we plan on doing the following. These division-wide technology upgrades are not laptops, they are not teacher computers or anything, this is, these are infrastructure needs for, for the whole division. This is the, the nuts and bolts or the guts of the, of the system to make it run. Bus replacements and bus additions, we, the School Board dedicated itself last year and continues to support the idea that we're going to keep our school bus fleet up to date and within DOE recommended standards. And so we're in the second year of that plan in FY18, so we will be purchasing four additional buses as replacements, and we are keeping, we're monitoring whether or not additional buses may be needed due to enrollment. And that's what the $217,000 is for, to buy two more additional buses as needed. You'll see those numbers fluctuate from year to year depending on our, the age of our fleet and our true needs based on student enrollment. We will not, at this time, be buying buses for additional, additions to the bus fleet due to student enrollment unless they are, we actually have the enrollment, of course. Now, there, there has been some mention about us acquiring additional buses in the hope of one day reducing our, the number of tiers that we have for our, our students. So that may be an option for the School Board to discuss at that time. Going down, you'll see in FY18 and throughout the entire CIP, we've only made a couple of changes from one year, from what we had last year. One is moving the main gym bleacher replacement at Osborne High School from FY21 to FY18. We moved it up generally mainly because of safety concerns for the bleachers are, are past their useful life and they are, we have to pull out the last two rows, the last two rows will not automatically, will not go out. So we believe that we should move that up on the, on the timeline. Down further, you'll see where we have in blue the roof replacement at Mayfield. Mayfield roof has been an issue for us over, over the years, and we are recommending, it was not on the CIP at all last year, and we are recommending that we place it on the CIP for FY20, and we would be putting in a metal roof. And the roof now is a shingle roof, but we would put in a metal roof, it's what the building was originally designed for. And it's $2.5 million. You can see the other projects that we have out there, I don't, I don't know if anyone has any questions or concerns or about any particular project. One of the big projects you'll see go out there is the replacement of Dean Elementary, $44.9 million in FY20. We'll start that process in FY19 to begin looking at design and other new school, and we'll start building this new school in FY20, and it'll be open FY21. we'll start building this new school in FY20, and it'll be open FY21. That will be an intermediate school. So, I don't know if there's any, any particular questions or concerns about any of the projects that we have out here. You'll see that we have secured vestibules that are being placed in each of our schools. Most of them, those fall in FY22. Some of them may be in FY21. So, those are, those are planned project school upgrades to keep our children safe from intruders or others, is to increase the security of our school division.
Mr. Hawkins, we may not have a whole lot of questions for you right now, but I want everybody to understand that we've been presented this half dozen times.
At least three times.
And we've already tweaked it and changed it, and so I want everybody to know that we've been very interested and worked very hard on this, and if there are no questions, that's why. Are there any questions?
I don't have a statement.
Yeah, I have a statement.
Well, go ahead, Ms. Matt.
Well, mine's not 100% relevant, but I'm pretty sure that it goes along with this. At Osborne, they put in automatic water bottle refillers, like the motion censored ones, and I just wanted to say thank you, and those are such a luxury, and I love having them because I probably refill my water bottle four times a day, and my hand doesn't get wet anymore, and it's just great, so thank you, it's awesome.
It's great not to have wet hands, that's wonderful.
It's a luxury.
It is. It is, it's great.
And I thought that would probably tie into this, so I just threw it in there.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sibeski?
I just would like to make a statement. Thank you for your presentation. I think it's important that the public understand and see our thoughts and plans. As Mr. Di Maria, Chairman Di Maria has already said, this has been discussed quite a bit by this board already, but what I would like the public to understand is how proud I am of this board for always taking into mind the needs of the division, planning for it, and trying to prepare the funding to cover these needs. This is a truly working document, not something that we discuss, put aside, and then when it comes budget cycle, not think about or worry about funding. So, thank you as the keeper of our money, to keeping us so well informed of the needs and presenting it in such a clear, concise way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Albright? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to reinforce what the chair said. There's been a lot of work that goes into here, what Mrs. Sibeski said with the transparency in it, that, you know, this is near and dear to my heart. We have a huge investment of taxpayer money in plants and equipment, and we've got to sustain it so we can continue to perform our mission. The fact that we have segregated out school bus replacements from school bus additions because additions are based upon enrollment, and if you just assume we go ahead and buy those, well, 12 or 13 years, I forget what we use for a replacement cycle right now, we'd be replacing the buses that we replaced, plus the two more new ones that Mr. Hawkins just talked about. So, that's a huge amount of work with respect to it. The one thing that just hit me as we were talking, Mr. Hawkins, is as we continue to bring facilities online, and especially with Dean, the plug we have that we came up with last year for pay-go, pay-as-you-go, we probably should every three to five years readdress that relative to the value of assets we have and inflation. Right now, we're dealing in virtually zero inflation, but that may or may not be the case in two or three years. So just, uh...
Could I do? Thank you. You can remember that, because you'll be here for four more. All right, anybody else? Mr. Hawkins.
All right, thank you. We'll flip now to the five-year forecast. Five-year forecast is the, it hasn't changed since the last time that we discussed about it, but the state revenue, we are projecting that it will, we're trying to be conservative with the revenue projection going out, it being at a 2% increase each year. The FY17 number, well, the FY17 and FY18 number have both given, been given to us by the state based on our projected average daily membership, so we, and the governor's budget. Now, the governor's budget will be released again, I think it's December the 16th, sort of in the middle of December. It's either the 16th or the 18th, it'll be released again this year. As you are probably aware, the governor's budget this year for FY17 came up short from revenue projections, and so the school division, or all school divisions and state agencies throughout the Commonwealth, they reduced the amount of funds that they were giving to school divisions for compensation increases. For FY17, that amounts to about $350,000 for Manassas City Public Schools. Going forward in FY18, we don't know what the governor is going to do yet, but in the FY17 projection, that was over $650,000 for FY18. We're hopeful, we're praying that the revenue projections will be better and that compensation supplement will be included in the state revenue going forward. Federal revenue, we leave it as being constant throughout each year. It's very hard to estimate what the federal revenue will be from one year to the next. All of that money is given to us through grants, and so we really have to spend the money to get it back, and we only get back what we spend. The city revenue, it is shown there, it has a red star beside it, and that means that we have a funding agreement with the city that's only, that's good through FY19. Mr. Bushnell, Mr. Albright, and some of the school, Ms. Sibeski, were all part of the team that helped come up with a funding agreement with the city. That's good through FY19. We've showing, projected out through FY21, the city revenue is being under the same funding agreement. That may not necessarily be so by the time we get there. That's the only basis that we had to go by to, to project revenue going out. The school board and the city council, I think, are going to get back together June, July, August, and next year to talk about the funding agreement going forward, and by the end of FY19, we should have an agreement to, of what the new funding agreement, if any, changes will be made for the next three years, which will be FY20, 21, and 22. Just want to make that clear, that those numbers are up there for illustrative purposes only. If you go down, you will see our projected expenditures. Expenditures are also projected to increase in the operating fund 2% annually. So when we get down to the proffer revenue, the proffer revenue was reduced from, this number used to be $800,000. We keep in close contact with our partners in the city, and they are estimating that the proffer revenue for FY17 and throughout will be 500,000, not 800,000, as it was shown before. You will be able to see the debt service. You'll see that the debt service of, for FY17 is 7.3 million, projected for FY18 is 7.4, and then you'll see a significant drop for the years that we're getting ready to build Dean Elementary. You know, this was not an accident, it was a purposeful deliberative process that was done by the school board to help with the timing of the building of Dean Elementary, Dean Intermediate School. So, once we, once we get Dean Elementary built and up, you'll see that our debt service will increase again back to approximately $10 million by the time we get into FY22. At the end of the, at the end of the day, we look at where our fund balance will be at the end of the day, where we, our estimates are going out for the next, for FY17 through 19, we'll, we'll still be in, or should be, I should say FY20, we'll be, all be in positive and be fine. And, you know, the out-years, FY21 and 22, are showing slight, being in deficit those two years, but a lot can change between now and then. State revenue, city revenue, we got our true expenditures, the projects that we do in the CIP, so wouldn't, wouldn't worry about these numbers as if you have, we'll know more the closer we get to those, to those years. Is there any questions, concerns?
Thank you, sir. Same thing I said last time. We've seen this a million times as well.
Two clarifications. The 17 numbers do reflect the revised lowered state that's forecast here?
Yes.
Thank you. And just something before we adopt this or take action on it later in the spring, we probably should revisit the assumptions with respect to debt service and the out-years. I mean, bond, bond prices, it's really a fluctuating market right now with what just happened. My guess is they'll probably be about a point, a point and a half higher than what they are today by the time we get out then.
The, we work with a consultant that's hired by the city called Davenport Incorporated Company, who projected this, and their, their projections, of course, were done, you know, prior to the election and everything, of course, and it was at about 4.5% interest. So, you know, you're right, we do need to take another look at it as we get closer, as things come to fruition. If the, you know, the economy gets better, I mean, and our president-elect is projecting that our annual growth will double, and the economy is going to get a lot better, if that comes to fruition, then that means that our revenue will increase and issue, and we will not be in deficit through the out-years. But it could also increase the interest rate for the bonds as well, depending on what the Federal Reserve does. So it's a lot of factors that are involved in all of this.
And to your point, I mean, deficit, people in the audience, people looking at this should not be concerned that in 2022, we're showing a couple of million-dollar negative number, because every single number out there is based on a set of assumptions that may or may not happen.
That's right.
To the point about city revenue, state revenue, federal revenue, expenses, but it's just giving an impact of where we think we'll be, and I think since we've been doing these, I don't know if I've ever seen one that doesn't have red in the out-years, and sometimes it's three, four, three or four years that are red.
This is a very conservative estimate. We didn't, there is no, no blue skies in all of this, no bright, you know, that we're, no optimism in this at all. We've been very conservative with these numbers. We expect, if anything, for the numbers to be better, not worse than what we've shown above.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Matt, nothing?
Not this side.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. It just never ends, doesn't it?
And you're still going to have her to pick one.
I am, I got her for a whole, another six months or so. I'm so excited. I will. Just thinking about it, I already do. OHS New Course Proposals, Ms. Benner.
Hi, Chair Di Maria, Vice Chair Albright, members of the school board, and Dr. McGork. On behalf of Osborne High School, I'd like to present the courses that we are going to offer, the new courses that we'd like to offer for the school year 2016-17. To begin with, we'd like to revisit our whole process because many of these courses are involved in the redesign of our CTE program, which you've heard about this evening from other sources. So, last year, just to revisit, last year, we had a, we worked with a consultant who visited our CTE program, and met with our faculty and the administration, and determined the best courses to align with workforce predictions. And so, we are excited that tonight, some of those first steps in the redesign of CTE, you know, we're hoping to offer. The goals of our CTE transformation, we wanted to improve the depth of our CTE programming, include project-based learning in all of our CTE courses. We want to create not only a college-going culture, but also a work-based culture at Osborne for all of our Eagles. We wanted to align it with student interest, but especially with job market trends and increased opportunities for school-to-work programs for our kids. One of the things that I'm very proud about is that we engaged our local and regional businesses as partners in the redesign, and they, through the foundation and through local businesses, have helped us design the courses that you're going to see this evening. We've also been working, I think, as Ms., one of our school board members said, in the creation of industry-caliber facilities with our Makerspace areas, we are still waiting to hear if we've been awarded the Governor's STEM Academy designation. We still have not heard that yet. We're anticipating that that will be soon, and much of this is in alignment with the proposals that we put forward to the governor. And we're really excited about the creation of our Early College Program Academy, and what that basically means is that in our Business Academy, students will earn their associate's degree at the same time that they earn their diploma from Osborne. And our goal, again, is to expand dual enrollment opportunities so that our students not only leave college-ready, but they already leave with college credits. I feel particularly encouraged because, like many other people said tonight, this is the, I presented this to you several times, and the feedback that I got from our students here was really valuable, and made me feel like we've got our finger on the pulse of what they really want and need. So the new course proposals for next year, there are three fine performing arts courses, Guitar III, which will be a part of our sequence in guitar, Introduction to Dance, which is a new course, and that will be to sort of, that's the one piece that's kind of missing in our amazing performing arts program, and Sculpture II, which we'll offer that, Sculpture I and Sculpture II, as a sequential elective for our students. A new course that will support our students working as our Writing Center tutors, they're already working there in the Writing Center, and so the Advanced Composition course will afford them credit for their work. And then 10 new CTE courses that align with our CTE plan that we developed and presented last year. The Academic and Career Academy, our Health and Human Services, two of the proposed courses are the EMT Tech I course and Cosmetology III. As you know, I'll start with cosmetology. We have a very robust cosmetology program. One of the things that we're hoping to do is to add a storefront to our cosmetology program so that it will be an actual working business. And it's, so the EMT course is where we are, we've put a lot of energy into developing this course. We've worked in partnership with the MCPD and the MC Fire Department, the Manassas City Fire Department, in sort of figuring out what course would be best to offer in our, our goal to have a sequence for kids that are interested in being first responders. What we learned in the process of trying to put these courses together is that EMT I, there's a lot of demand, there's a lot of job growth that they're predicting will go along with this, and it's also the foundational course for a lot of different fields. For example, Mr. Steiner, who is our CTE coordinator, stressed in the initial meeting that he had with you that to be an FBI agent or to work for the Secret Service, EMT courses are required. So our STEM Career Academy, we, as you know, we have, this is our, we're getting ready to go into our third year of Project Lead the Way. Project Lead the Way is an amazing program, and so the first one is the Introduction to Engineering, first year, second year is Principles of Engineering, and then the third year, students branch out into more intentional and more specific areas of study. We're hoping to offer digital electronics, as well as civil engineering and architecture. Both of those fields have huge growth, huge job growths associated with it. The civil engineering and architecture, they are predicting that 64,000 jobs will be available annually because of the aging infrastructure of our country. Digital electronics is a blossoming field that you'll see is closely tied to cybersecurity, which is another course we hope to offer. We are offering HVAC and Refrigeration I this year, but next year, it will be a full program, and we hope to offer Part II so that it's also a sequential elective, also a burgeoning field. The Business and Finance Academy is the one that we, that I spoke of earlier, where the, there's going to be an opportunity to earn an associate's degree at the same time that you earn your college diploma, I mean, your high school diploma, so you earn your associate's, you'll walk across the stage, and I guess we'll hand two diplomas to you at the same time, and then they'll be all flying like eagles. The Fundamentals of Cybersecurity course is a new course that's been proposed by VDOE. It is, we have an anonymous donor that has put up grant money for this course, as long as the foundation will match funds, which they've agreed to do. And so, we truthfully believe this is our field of dreams. We think this is the program that we'll put into place. It's like build it and they'll come, because we believe that kids are vitally interested in this field, and the jobs, we know, are there. when many of us were in high school, they called this programming. It is now referred to as coding. It is also a wide-open field. And the Computer Systems Technology, which will be a more advanced computer systems, computer information systems program than we have now. Go to the next one. The proposed courses for our Arts and Humanities Academy, Commercial Photography II, to be sequential with our Commercial Photography I that we're offering this year. Our Introduction to Dance, which is going to be artistic dance, and it will, as I said, complement our Performing Arts Program. Sculpture II, Advanced Guitar III, and Advanced Composition. So, to accomplish this, we believe that we're going to need one full-time EMT tech teacher, one full-time Project Lead the Way teacher, one full-time cybersecurity teacher, and a halftime HVAC teacher. That 3.5 positions are about the same number of positions that we cut last year when we were in the middle of the redesign. So, the total cost, you'll see on, for CTE and the other courses, the cost per personnel, we believe is about $245,000, and then the equipment, some of this is startup money, it's not going to be repeat money. So, the total for all of these programs will be $469,350, approximately. I think that might be it. Is that it? Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Do you want a motion? More discussion? Do you want questions first? Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the new course offerings for Osborne High School for the 2017-18 school year.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion.
Two things, really. One is just to thank you as we continue, I think everyone knows workforce readiness in graduating students to employment, not the unemployment line, is a passion of mine. I know we talked about it in the work session on this, the halftime HVAC teacher, which probably is like a purple unicorn to try to find. I mean, you're still hoping to find it. You talked about maybe some various options you thought might be available. Ms. Benner?
Right. Currently, we have a point, we have a .5, so that will actually, excuse me, that will actually become a full-time position at that point.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Alonso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Out of all these courses, how many of them offer an actual certification?
All of the CTE courses do.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Good one. Ms. Matt?
I just have a quick, like, statement. I just wanted to say how great it was, because I know that I want to go to college, and that I plan a career that might not be a trade, but not everyone does, and I think it's great that we're giving our students so many options, and if I didn't want to go to college, that I had so many options to choose from, and I just think that's really great, especially since college is just not for everybody, and that is something you're going to find out in high school, whether you want to go to college or whether you want to take a different path. And we give them the opportunity to try it out and see if it works for them, and if it doesn't, they have more opportunities to go on to something else. So, I just think that's something really great that we need to treasure here.
Wonderful. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. First, as the Chair of the Academic Committee, I've seen this numerous times, so thank you very much for bringing this to us. It's great to have a variety of courses which will enhance our students' learning and give them a variety of options. One thing I would like to mention, and Mr. Albrecht mentioned that he's passionate about CTEs, and I am as well, but my wife and I, who's sitting right there, my wife back there, we often talk about the fact that CT is very important, but you can't have both. And hopefully, we'll drive kids who have a CTE interest to go to college. So, let's say they want to be an auto mechanic, they can own their own shop and not just be an auto mechanic. There's nothing wrong with that, but they have the skills, so if they want to be an auto mechanic, they can do that. They want to own a shop, they can do that. So, we want to use those things in tandem to work together to help our kids be the best they can be. But this is a great foundation, and hopefully, we can use that to encourage our kids to look at different careers, and also inspire some of them maybe to go to college, they hadn't thought about that, especially with the associate's degree component. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ladies, anything? No. Thank you, Ms. Benner.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Ms. Sibeski, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the new course proposal for 2017-2018 at Osborne High School. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have nothing else. Am I right? Someone?
Mr. Chair, I move the school board, no, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Sibeski, second by Mr. Williams to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six-zero. Thank you, everyone.